To the Vermillion High School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, April 12th. Call the board, please, Justin.
Mrs. Staff?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Abraham?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Board members present.
So if you'd please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance with the board.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whose justice we hold.
Okay, Chris Peter Mill has our student V A N report.
All right, so I believe we've got some members of the Vermillion High School play that we're currently putting on, right? Some of you guys want to come up and maybe talk at the microphone and tell us a little bit about what we have going on? Maybe tell us who you are and a little bit about what you're doing.
Hello, my name is Brayden Walzak. I play Wasworth, the butler, in the upcoming show Clue that we are putting on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday will all be at seven, and then there also is a one o'clock matinee on Saturday.
Hello, my name is Cindy Atkins. I'm playing the character Mr. Green. For all of you that enjoy the board game, this will be a very delightful homage to that, and I think everyone should come and watch it. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Xander Neiger, and I play Colonel Mustard. You will be able to see me all four nights during the show, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity to play this character, and I'm very excited for you guys to see the show, and yeah, can't wait.
Hello, I'm Sophia Flumester, and I play Mrs. Peacock. I would just like to say, even if you have seen the movie or played the board game, you'll still be surprised, and I think you'll have a good time if you come and watch it, so you totally should. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Doris Suzoudell. I'm a junior, and I play Mrs. White. I think this is one of the best plays we've ever done, so I'm really proud of it, and I hope you guys will come and see it.
Hi, my name is Scarlett Oliver, and I'll play Mrs. Scarlett. If you guys wanted to come, make sure you get here a little bit earlier because there are only 150 people allowed, and yeah, it'll be really great. This is one of the best sets we've had ever, so definitely come and see it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Justin Zilsky. I play Professor Plum, and I think that this play is going to be a really exciting return to our stage at Vermillion High School.
So we've done a really great thing with this, trying to stretch out with only about 150 people in our audience. So we actually have two casts. So we have a cast we call the opening night cast. They perform on Thursday night and on Saturday matinee, and the closing night cast performs on Friday and Saturday night. So this is our closing night cast, and the group behind us here is our opening night cast. So they have two little short scenes. So they're going to do a scene, and then the other cast is going to do a scene. Just to give you a taste of what's...
Does the opening night group want to introduce themselves? I think it's all prepared.
Hi there, Mr. Plum, members of the board. I'm Patrick Anders. I'm currently a sophomore here at Vermillion High School, and I along with Brayden play Mr. Wasworth in this production of Clue. I believe that it is will be a great show for the whole community and bring a sense of community to those who've been here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie Newble, and I play Mrs. Scarlett for the opening night cast of Clue, and I'm a freshman at Vermillion High School, and I'm so excited for you to hopefully see the show. It has been such a joy to recreate these very well-known characters and give it to you for one night. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Noah Jameson. I'm a junior at Vermillion High School. I'm Mr. Green along with Atkins over there. It's a really a fun show. We've all put a lot of hard work in, especially my fellow crewmates, castmates. We're really excited to put it out to the community because, you know, we haven't been able to see a show in a while, so it's something we kind of look forward to, and it's just an exciting time for everyone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a surgeon. I'm playing Mrs. White on opening night while Doris Suzoudell is playing Mrs. White on closing night. They're pretty cool over there, so I would definitely come and see the show to support these amazing people along with the crew and the directors who have put so much work into creating live theater which we haven't experienced in a very long time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Saxon. I'm a senior here. I'm playing Mrs. Peacock from Bolivia. This has been, this experience has been one of the best, probably like the theatrical experiences I've had, and I'm just really excited for our performance.
Hi, I'm Olivia Redd. I'm a junior. I play the baby bed as well as Katie Cox, who's on the table on the Chelsea Plaza. I'm so excited for a lot of people to come and see our show because there's been a lot of swine, a lot of hard work swine to this set looks amazing, and we just worked really hard, and it's been really fun to have you show this.
I'm Seamus Long. I'm a freshman, and I'm playing Professor Plum. I know everybody here has so much effort and love in their character. It would just be awesome if you guys could come out and see us. Neither one of us, either asked, both are really good, both have a lot of effort into this. Thank you.
Right. Good then, you're all here. Mrs. Peacock?
Howdy, doo.
Colonel Mustard?
Present.
Professor Plum?
I suppose.
Mrs. Scarlett? Mrs. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Green?
That's me. Greetings, I am Wasworth, the butler. Tonight, as you may have surmised, no one is being addressed by their real name. Of courtesy your coach that provides you with people, we suggest that you refrain from revealing too much about yourself because you never know when... Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. I'm a little bit coughing. Sorry. Dinner.
Mr. Wasworth, you're saying you never know when? What?
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 This way, please, to the dining room. We really want you to cook wings. She can get a break. Ladies and gentlemen, follow me to the dining room. It's right next to me.
Mr. Plum, open up the dinner. It's for you.
Ah, yes. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, these instructions are clear.
Well, I'm glad something is.
It seems the six of you have all received the same letter. It will be to your advantage to be present on this date because a Mister Body will bring that to a certain longstanding and painful financial liability.
Yes.
As it appears, you all have the same thing in common. The Tug of Conde will be blacklisted on... Close, Colonel, you're all being blackmail. Per considerable time, all of you have been paying more than you can afford to someone who threatens to dispose.
Oh, please. What's someone going to blackmail me for? I go to church every Sunday. Y'all, ladies, help me all.
Anybody else wish to deny it? I thought not. Till you had received your letters, you had no idea who was blackmailing you, but now I'm sure even the least discerning among you has determined that your blackmailer is none other than Mr. Body himself.
And who is this man? Who is this man?
Mr. Body, what is that?
Who is this body fellow you're...
Who Mr. Body is is none of concern of yours. Suffice it to say, he's a supporter of the House on American Activities Committee, and he feels that all of your activities have been decidedly un-American.
Now, you're...
My task this evening is to render your all secrets to each other, rendering you all culpable in each other's indiscretions. Don't be hard with no one. Precisely.
Don't you think you might spare us this million?
I'm afraid I have no choice.
Mr. Johnson, and cast and crew, thank you. We look forward to having you. It's great having you back in the schools, and we look forward to seeing the play on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. So thanks for coming out tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, I would like to recommend a resolution to view the new executive session with the release of manners required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules for state statutes. I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0 at a time of 7:14 PM.
Okay, we have the superintendent's report.
All right, I don't have anything on my report tonight because we were going to talk in executive session on several topics, so I tried to purposely keep up my report short, and it was really short with nothing on it, but I'm going to add something to it tonight because Lisa DeLeese is in the audience, and we were going to have her come up at the discussion time, but we might as well have her come up right now under my report, and she's going to talk about some of the various activities that we've got coming up and just give you a little bit of background on some of the things that are going on in the district that, due to COVID, really had an impact, and I think that some changes have taken place with COVID so that we can do some things differently that we didn't, weren't quite sure how they were going to go. So Lisa, thanks.
So we've had, and everything is brand new again this year. Last year was all brand new, this year's all brand new because everything, you know, we're waiting constantly for guidance on what is allowed, what isn't allowed, and then, you know, the task is what can we do and what can we do to ensure everyone's safety and still be in the building and enjoy and kind of continue some of the traditions and activities that we have here at Vermillion High School. And just as you saw the people tonight, they crave exactly what we can offer here at school. So we have a list of activities. We are going to run everything that we possibly can that we have run in the past at the high school. There are some adjustments, just as Phil had mentioned. The biggest one, and I don't want to go out of order because I don't want to confuse anybody, but the biggest one will be graduation. We're going to do it at the football stadium. They have recommended as many things as you can do outside, and it really allows for more tickets. We have a larger space, and it allows for us to let more family members attend, and so that will be a little bit different. It's going to be a Friday night, which is kind of cool. We haven't done that here. I don't know if it's ever been done, but it'll be an interesting Friday night under the lights here at Vermillion High School Stadium. So we are looking forward to that. I totally anticipated it to be just as special and keeping up with some of those things that we have done in the past. We will have the band on the football field with the graduates. We'll have the guests in the stadium looking down. We're going to try to livestream it, so I'm going to work with Andy Stillman on how to do that so that those people from home can still enjoy it. So I'll get to all the dates. I'll go in order. We will be running Evening of Excellence. We are going to run it outside at the football stadium. It'll be a nice kind of practice run for us on May 6th of how everything works. Once again, I don't have, we are not going to fill that stands to capacity with the Evening of Excellence, but it's an opportunity. It is a large, we have about 130 students that will be recognized that evening. We're going to run it May 6th at 6:30. May 10th is the rain date for it being outside. But then that way, if I ran it anywhere inside, I would have been limited to like two tickets per kid. This way, we can open it up, and families can come, and then we can kind of get used to the sound system and everything that we need to do outside. There will be a choir concert, but we're going to hold that in the gymnasium. We just felt they've worked really hard too, and performers like to perform, but we had to do it in a safe way, so we will be running that on May 13th at 7:00 in our gymnasium, spread out. That way, we can have more guests also in the gym versus our auditorium, which obviously we know auditorium has better sound, but at this point, it's just about the experience. Prom is going to run May 15th. It will be held right here. We are going to do all of the requirements that the Ohio Department of Health have given us. No more than 10 to a table, they'll be six feet apart. We will have dancing. We will ask them to be masked in the process. We will still run, we will allow the community to come in at 4:30. We're going to say, please don't touch anything, but you're more than welcome to look, come in masked, 4:30 to 6:30. We will be open for those who would like to walk through. 6:30 will be red carpet arrival at this side of the gym, and then dance and dinner from 7 to 11:00. So we are running full force ahead. We did open it up. Our students are able to invite other students from other schools as long as they get that form approved by administration. There are some districts that were debating whether they were going to allow that, and we decided we would offer that opportunity for our students. We did up the price of prom tickets by $5, but that was really to avoid any sort of fundraising. We really lost out on fundraising this year, and we kind of felt to offset that most parents at this point would say, or students, here's $5, and that tickets did go up $5 for that reason. Let's see, that is May 15th. Kim Judd is tentatively trying to run Annie. That was the musical that we were going to have last spring, and you have to understand all of our boosters who work so incredibly hard, when we shut down and when things shut down to no fault of anybody's, they lose all of their, you know, opportunity to make money and to bring in and to give back to our students here. So we're trying to find a way to do Annie, and if we're able to get that done, that'll be announced soon. She's trying to get through Clue, but that would be the weekend of May 20, 21, and 22, and similar to how we are doing Clue, limited tickets, but we're going to try to get that up and going. Scholarship night is for our seniors. May 24th is our seniors' last day. We will come in, we will do practice, we will do breakfast, we will do the walk at the elementary and the middle school. We've still arranged, we've arranged that with Matt and Matt, and they are all for it. We will operate there. We will have our graduation practice that evening. We will have scholarship night. We are going to keep it in the auditorium just because of the, we have about 50 students that had applied for scholarships. We'll see how many actually reach, you know, receive one of those, but we believe we can hold it safely in the auditorium and kind of keep that special ambiance that the auditorium offers versus some of the other spaces that we have. And then graduation, so that will be May 24th at 6:30. And then graduation is the big change. It will be May 28th. It's just, and it actually made a lot of sense because our last day for teachers is May 28th, and I really try to encourage our teachers to attend our students. That's just a very special thing when you see the teachers in the roads and here supporting the students that they've had for so many years. We are going to run it May 28th at 7:00. Each family, each student will get eight tickets for that, and we will be on the home side of the stands, and that really leaves us enough room to meet the guidelines set forth by Ohio Department of Health and CDC guidelines that they've given us for graduation. We're going to keep going until we get graduation. So if it's May 28th it rains, and we can't run it, we're running it May 29th. If we can get May 29th, then we're running it May 30th, and we're hoping we're done by then. So just plan on that Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We'll have, we'll start looking at the weather, and hopefully that'll be at 7:00 at the stadium. And we are having a couple in-house assemblies, but really limiting the numbers. I can't do a full-scale school assembly, which the kids are really dying for. I just, we can't do that quite yet with the guidelines, but we will be running a May Day shortened version that will livestream to our students that we can invite. They'll be in the classrooms, and we also are running an academic assembly. We'll invite those students who have been honored on the Evening of Excellence in front of their other, you know, we'll have a special ceremony for them also here during the day. So that's a lot to wrap up the end of the year, but we're really excited that we can do that this year for our students.
Lisa, thanks for you and your team to make all these things possible. I know that you've all worked hard to make these adjustments, and just as we saw the students tonight, they're just, it's great to see them back in the building, and it's great to get all them back doing these activities. It's not 100% like it was, but it's going to be great. I'm sure that the families will be appreciative of it. We know the kids are, so we're looking forward to all of these things, and thank you for putting that work together.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have the treasurer's report with the trustee's.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the wage agreement with O C Local 332 at Vermillion Local Schools for a 2% increase to the base effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. At a one-time longevity payment not to accumulate in years 28, 29, and 30 in the amount of $1,500 per year. Employees who have serviced 28 years or more on March 25th, 2021 will be paid retroactively in one month sum and has attachment A in the report. I'll move.
I'll second. Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Stay here.
Motion approved, three yanks, one substantial. Number two, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report from March 31st, 2021 and has attachment B.
I'll move.
Second. Looking at the general fund first, revenue by the month, through the month of March, we have received 200, or sorry, 22 million, 22.2 million in general fund revenue compared to 22 million in fiscal year '20, 21.8 million in fiscal year '19, 22 million again in fiscal year '18, and 21.3 million in fiscal year '17. So all in all, looking at the general fund at this time throughout the year, our revenue is right on pace where it has been historically. Looking at food service revenue through the month of March, we have received 348,000 compared to 431,000 at this time last year, 515,000 in '19, 468,000 in '18, and 408,000 in '17. Again, COVID has had a large impact on our food service revenue. However, with students back in person, I'm seeing our fund starting to stabilize a little bit more than it was at the beginning of this year, and we should finish this year, at the end of this year, positive with our revenue here. Looking at all funds by revenue through March, we've received 24.6 million compared to 24.8 million at this time last year, 23.4 at this time in '19, 23.7 in '18, and 23.7 in '17. So again, our general fund revenue is on pace with what it has been historically, and so is all funds. Taking a look at the expenditure side, through the month of March, we've expended 17.5 million compared to 17.9 at this time last year, 16.8 in '19, 17.9 in '18, and 18.4 in '17. So again, we do have a couple ebbs and flows throughout our historical revenue side, our rent expenditure side there, but again, we're right on pace with where we are historically at most part. Taking a look at food service, we've expended 462,000 this year compared to 618,000 at this time last year, 498,000 in '19, 186,000 in '18, and 452,000. Again, we're pretty much right in line. A lot of that has to do with just salaries, but that's right in line with historically where we manage, our revenue's a little bit lower. However, again, that's picking back up now that students are back in person. Looking at all funds by revenue, I'm sorry, by expenditures, through the month of March, we've expended 19.8 million from all funds compared to 20.8 at this time last year, 18.6 in '19, 19.6 in '18, and 20.5 in '17. Looking at our cash, looking at the general fund first through the month of March, we have a total of 20.8 million in cash compared to 20.2 million, 23 million in '20, 19.4 in '19, 18 million in '18, and 16.8 million in '17. Moving on to food service, through the month of March, cash-wise, we have a total of $59,814 in cash compared to 191,000 at this time last year, 316,000 in '19, 269,000 in '18, and 274,000 in '17. And lastly, we want to take a look at all cash. Through the month of March, we have a total of 24.3 million in cash compared to 23.4 at this time last year, 22.7 in '19, 21.4 in '18, and 20.4 in '17. Moving on to investments through the month here, we've earned a total of $144,920.33 on interest compared to 249,692.6 cents last year at this time. So again, a difference of 104,000 or roughly 72% less in interest this year compared to last year. The Federal Reserve did release new numbers that they don't anticipate increasing interest rates until, I think it was March of 2023, so our interest will continue to be low for the foreseeable future here.
Do we have any questions?
Oh, just a comment. I mean, in spite of all the hardships the last really two years, this is still a pretty good decision to be in, so great job, Justin.
You have these superintendent orders as well. This is all, you know, decision happens amongst everybody, so thank you.
Wonderful. Call the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number three, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the Terry Shock Scholarship for Musical Excellence. This scholarship will be awarded to this year's graduating class in the amount of $1,000 to be used specifically for a student majoring in music performance or in music education.
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions? Call the board, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mrs. Staff?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number four, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the following donations: $500 from Zabo Apparel to Fine Arts Club Scholarship; $250 from Bud Ennis to the Fine Arts Club Scholarship; $100 from James Forthover to the Fine Arts Club Scholarship; $5,570 from Erie County Community Foundation, the Delco Vatic Fund to Vermillion Local School Music Department; $4,170 to Erie County Community Foundation to Vermillion Education Fund; and $408 from George and Mary Foster Family Fund to Erie County Community Foundation to Vermillion Local Schools District STEM Program. I'll move.
I'll second. Any questions on this? We want to also thank all of the people who have donated because we are very appreciative for anything and all of the support that they give us in this community that we're in.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number five, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the Medicaid School Program Service Agreement beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending on June 30th, 2024, at a cost of $23,250 for three years and has attachment C.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions?
This is the, this is the third party that we use. Someone, when I first got here, we weren't a Medicaid provider, and now all the services that we do, we bill back to Medicaid, and this is the company that we use to make sure the billing goes through correctly and we do get revenue back from them. Mrs. Ennis? Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number six, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the contract with NWA MAP Growth K-12 License from August 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2022, at a cost of $12,500 and has attachment D.
I'll move. I'll second. Any, is it for math?
This is just for the students for the math test.
The math test. Any questions on it? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number seven, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the agreement with Frontline Technology Absence Substitute Management and Applicant Tracking for 2021, 2022, at a cost of $8,640 for three sets and has attachment E.
I'll move.
I'll second.
This is our online version of calling in for absences and giving substitutes.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number eight, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the fiscal year 2022 Master Agreements Schedule 1 and Schedule 2 and with Meta Solutions at an estimated cost of $35,800 of an estimated enrollment of 1,669 students and has attachment F.
I'll move.
Second.
This is just the, the party that we use. This is our A site. This is the people that either EVA's coordinator, payroll, or accounts payable call when we run into issues with our, our software.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number nine, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the 2021, 2022 Multi-Agre Agreement Contract with North Point Educational Service Center and Vermillion Local School District at a cost of $210,000 and has attachment G. Make the motion.
I'll second.
We do partner with North Point to receive a lot of services that just based on our size, we aren't able to have a full-time equivalent employee do that. So a lot of the services that we provide to them aren't cost-effective to us. It wouldn't make sense to hire somebody for a little bit of on-work that would be done. And so there's a lot of services that we do offer through North Point and this is to continue on with that practice.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number 10, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the 2021, 2022 North Point Alternative Learning Center Contract with Vermillion Local School District at a cost of $37,000 and has attachment H.
I'll move. I'll second.
This is just an additional contract here for, for alternative learning.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number 11, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the agreement for educational services between Lorain County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Vermillion Local School District attachment. Aye.
I'll move. Second.
Any questions on this? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number 12, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the amended Certificate of Estimated Resources and that is attachment J.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Yeah, so what this is, is I have to send this to the county auditor's office who then goes through our, our resources there, our estimated resources, verifies everything. This report is generated directly from our software now that we've switched to redesign before this wasn't generated as easily. And so what this is capturing is this is just showing every single one of our cash accounts, what the beginning balance was on July 1st, how much money we've collected from taxes, how much money we've collected from any other sources outside of taxes, and then what we have for a total available cash for each one of those accounts there. And then these are what are tied into the appropriations that I'll be asking the board to approve next. These numbers will show up on that document as well.
Now, any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number 13, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the April 2021 Appropriations Attachment K.
I'll move.
I'll second.
So on the first page, I've just listed in the funds that the county auditor looks for, general fund, special debt, capital, enterprise, internal, and fiduciary. That is the total amount of available resources we have. So that is our cash balance plus all of the revenue that we've collected equals our, basically our spending ceiling. Our spending ceiling is broken down into those special funds there. So if we look at the general fund, 40.3 is the absolute amount of money we can be able to generate to pay for any type of expenditure. That's just the certificate on the front. The second page is the actual appropriations. The last time we did this was in September. What this is, this is our spending plan. So this is the board authorizing the district that we can spend up to $24.5 million in the general fund. I can't spend a dollar more than that. And what I'm doing is just showing you the difference between September and April. Basically, I've reduced the appropriations down, $822,285 from September and as we go each month up to, up until July 1st, I'll keep reducing these down to get us exactly to where we need to be. So eventually, exactly what we spend for fiscal year 21 will match our appropriations 100%.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. And number 14, approve the literacy agreement with ESC of Lorain County for the literacy consultants to review district local literacy plan, consult with the assistant superintendent, and work with the literacy team and that is attachment F.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was. Okay, we have the consent agenda next. The superintendent and the treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the March 8th, 2021 regular meeting. Number two, recommend a resolution to approve the following district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by Neola for the first read as listed. Number three, approve the, approve the updates in the 2021, 2022 school calendar, attachment N. Number four, approve the following employment action, one-year supplemental contract for the 2020, 2021 contract school year to Randall Cole Assistant SMS Track Coach Level 13. Number five, special projects contract for the 2020, 2021 contract school year not to exceed 42 hours at $28 an hour to James Cartwright. Number six, maternity leave for Lauren Sealy beginning April 26th, 2021, and FM LA for Melissa Wagner from April 5th of this year through May 1st, 2021. Number seven, one-year classified contract for the 2020, 2021 contract school year to Natalie Jenkins, food service SMS Level 3. Number eight, approved payment of $300 each to Cheryl Gregg, Lincoln Fester, and Zo Noel. That's hard to say, for kindergarten screening for three days in May. Is there anything that needs to be removed?
Phil, on the compliance officer, does that matter? So for those policies, on the compliance officer, does that matter?
We're okay. Justin, I spoke.
So on the minutes of March 8th, we're here. On the roll call, it says Mrs. Johnson.
Mrs. Johnson.
It said Mrs..
Good morning.
The roll call from the March 8th minutes.
No, I think I'm not, I have this mixed up. I'm looking at, yeah.
It's like an officer or something.
No.
Just want to make sure you're actually reading this.
I've been doing it for weeks, that's right.
That's funny. Okay. I'll move. I'll second. Okay.
Who's second?
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
And the next section is our public participation. Are we good?
Since Candy's not here, she's probably watching livestream, so Candy, I have a list of all the things that Lisa summarized tonight in a little bit more in-depth, so I'll give that to Candy in the photo, for our photo journal article and we'll summarize all those things. So if you weren't able to scribble those things down in your listening livestream, we'll get, we'll get that list too.
And we have the date and location of our upcoming board meetings. Board meetings will be held in the cafeteria at Vermillion High School, 1250 Sanford Street in Vermillion, Ohio. Unless noted, regular meeting Monday, May 10th, regular meeting Monday, June 14th, and a regular meeting Monday, July 12th. And I have recommendation to, recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of matters required to be cut confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
I'll move. Second.